Call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation indivisible,
Michael. Like to begin with a moment of silence for the following. Lee Costello Ackerman, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Gary Morris Jr., a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Charles A. Ladd, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Caleb Colkin Schmidt, a student of the North Syracuse Central School District. Lori Gadsden, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Lori A. West, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Karen E. Shaw, a graduate and former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. And to begin by reading a proclamation from North Syracuse Central School District for Maintenance and Operations Appreciation Week. The appearance of our buildings and grounds has a significant impact on the environment for suitable learning for our students, working conditions for district employees, and is a sense of pride for our community. The Maintenance and Operations Department employees contribute to the school, family, and community by upholding professional work standards, receiving timely training, and approaching all tasks in a strong collective spirit of teamwork, which contributes to their overall work effectiveness. They exhibit diligence, patience, and professionalism in adjusting to new challenges and situations that occur in the school district buildings and grounds. To honor the Maintenance and Operations Department employees of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare the week of September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, through September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, as Maintenance and Operations Appreciation Week, to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. So I'll make a motion to declare the week of September thirteenth through seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, as Maintenance and Operations Appreciation Week to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. If I could get a second please, second from Ms. Kramer. Any discussion? Home favor, pose that is carried. Thank you. Congratulations. This is the proclamation and Jerry, if you'd like to come forward and accept this on behalf of MNO. Okay, next we have the universal pre-K kindergarten Learn As You Grow in Northminster presentation. So I believe you're in Learn As You Grow, I have listed first. Come forward and. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you and share our program this evening. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Katie and I am the UPK Director at Learn As You Grow. We are so thankful for our collaboration with the North Syracuse Central School District for many years now. We know some of you are very familiar with our program. However, we do know that there are some new faces, so we'll begin with just a quick overview of UPK. Students in our program will work towards becoming well-rounded students, better prepared for school and through life. Play-centered learning in small classrooms. They develop routines and become comfortable with classroom structures. We build positive relationships with other children and teachers, build social, emotional, critical thinking, math and reading skills, and working independently and in groups to explore new ideas, question concepts, and share their feelings. In short, we are tasked to be their first school experience and to help them fall in love with the process of learning and to become well-rounded students, better prepared for school and life. In your package you received this evening, there is a snapshot of learning centers within the classrooms and some of the items included in each center. A typical day in UPK. On this slide is the UPK schedule, and in the packet there are items that would be in the learning centers within our UPK classrooms. A typical day in UPK is designed with a schedule and a space to support routines and transitions that help to promote children's development and learning. These routines are an important part of a child's day. A UPK classroom schedule includes curriculum and educational activities, routines such as arrival times, bathroom times, cleanup times, quiet free choice time, mealtime, and departure times. With all of the transitions throughout the day, students learn to become independent and develop the abilities to learn and play successfully within the classroom. Please note that some of our normal activities have had to be changed or modified, obviously due to safety procedures in this time of COVID. For instance, at arrival times or departure times, we are meeting at the door instead of parents coming into the classrooms or the use of family-style meals. I'm sure as we all are, we're hoping to get back to those things soon. Our COVID procedures at Learn As You Grow are also included in your packet, but we do have a company healthcare illness policy. We ask parents daily to monitor and complete a daily health screening prior to attending Learn As You Grow, and if they have any members of their household that develop symptoms of COVID-19, to please contact Learn As You Grow and their family physician. By following these guidelines and their continued support, we look forward to another great school year. I'm sure many of these procedures look very familiar to a lot of you. Our assessments. We have added a new screening assessment, the ESI, or the Early Screening Inventory, which includes a parent questionnaire and a teacher screening packet. The Early Screening Inventory Tool is individually administered screening instrument to identify children who may need support services within the classroom to perform successfully in school. Again, we have included those items in your packet for you to review, but this is what a normal school year, the assessments we use each time that we have a new student that enters. Our curriculum, we have continued with our Learning Without Tears and Get Set For School curriculum at the pre-K level. We participate with Engage NY math curriculum and continue to incorporate Second Step social and emotional learning. And finally, we have enhanced our CKLA or Core Knowledge Language Arts Program, and we have included the five domains in your packet. This program is grounded in the science of reading combined with a rich, diverse content knowledge in history, science, literature, and the arts. This year, we had a conversion to our full-day program. We've increased from two and a half hours a day to six hours a day, although parents did have the choice whether to do two and a half hours or six hours. It has allowed for more time in their social and emotional, cognitive, creative, play, all of those things. We've been able to increase our time immensely in the six-hour program. We serve a lunch and a snack each day. Communication with the parent and guardian is still an important aspect of making the UPK experience exceptional. So we really do, even though we're meeting them at the door, try to talk with each parent as they pick up or drop off. And we are very excited to report that even with just a few days in, we've already seen such a wonderful transition into this program. Children are adapting very well to coming in for the first time and staying with us for six hours, which could be tough for a child that hasn't had this type of experience. And we're already seeing happy faces, wonderful reports from parents, and we're really excited about this coming school year. So again, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to share our program with you. And if anybody has any questions at this time that we didn't cover, I'd be happy to answer that. Or this guy right here. This is Josh LaGro, I guess I should have said that in the beginning. I'm so sorry.
What is the ratio of adult to children in your program?
There are, depending, it could be up to three teachers in our classroom. Some of our half-day classrooms are a little bit smaller right now, so we only need two teachers. And we're also very fortunate that we've also had a lot of children who have already begun the program with IEPs. And so we've had a lot of it, itinerant staff that have already begun to support the children during this time.
So how many children per adult is about? I mean, I'm sure it differs.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. And the Northminster folks can come right up.
Just kidding. All right. Good evening. My name is Sohi Legato. I'm the Director of Northminster Early Childhood Center, and this is Julianne P. She is the Director of Administration for both the Early Childhood Center and the church. So this was our 10th year serving as part of the UPK program. And this past year, the 2020-2021 school year, we had 34 students and families and 12 of them with IEPs. And we had a lot of CIT teachers who were there, and currently this year we have already had children receiving services with their CIT teachers, PTOT and speech as well. So our program strengths this past year, we focused on kindergarten preparation, supporting a positive atmosphere. Like I said, we had the CIT teachers, and we were very fortunate this past year to have two classrooms that were already full-day classrooms. So we used those classrooms as our pilot program for the full-day transition.
What I was gonna say, I would talk about, we have a partnership with Here To Learn, so they provide those support services at the beginning of the school year, which is really awesome. I know she already touched on it, and I'm not talking into the microphone, sorry. But our parent communication, we use a new app, childcare app called Brightwheel, which is really important. We're able to send pictures throughout the day to the families, and same with Learn As You Grow. We meet the children out front for arrival and departure. We don't allow parents in the building last year because of COVID, but this year because the model just worked so well last year that we continued it. You know, so that has worked really well for us as well, and being able to send them pictures throughout the day helps them connect, see their kids since they aren't able to, you know, see them inside at pickup or drop-off.
This past year, we were able to do some, to bring the parents in, the families in, and we were able to have a trikathon with our students, raising $1,148, and that was to support Galasano's Children's Center. And we also did some other projects where parents were able to see the students for our costume parade. We did have an in-person stepping-up ceremony, which was really nice to have those families there for that. We also partnered with the church in our reverse Advent, and we were able to do a lesson with Pastor Karen, who is the head of staff and also the pastor of the church. And we were able to teach the children about giving back to the community, which was really important, and they were able to grasp that concept. And we are already starting off this year with starting similar activities. We had some really fun activities that, like Julianne said, we weren't able to have families there, but we were able to send out to the parents how we had our 100th Day Celebration and Dr. Seuss. So keeping the kids engaged and hands-on with all of these activities, so they are focused and they're getting the social, emotional skills and getting them excited. So when they start kindergarten, they're ready and they know what to expect. A typical day in a EP classroom for us, like I said, we did have those full-day models, so we are continuing with that, where they come in, they wash their hands. Like Julianne said, we meet the parents at the door. We're able to have that open communication with them either outside, or if it's something that needs them not to be said in front of the children, we do phone calls or Brightwheel messages. They come in, they do their daily circle. We do a lot of hands-on. So at this age, you could, you all know that children do not benefit from sitting down and doing worksheets. So we're really making sure there's getting those hands-on skill with science and literacy and cross-curriculum. And we always make sure that they go outside because, again, at this young age, they really need those gross motor skills. COVID-19, so we're still on masks. Our, the ratio for four-year-olds is a one-to-eight ratio, and we do have in our UPK classrooms, there are two teachers and 16 students in there. So like Learn As You Grow, we had to reduce and change modifications within our classrooms, but we are very hopeful that things will be opening back up a little bit more. Students are separated by three feet, and they're doing lots of handwashing and practicing and singing their songs for that. They're also wearing masks full day, as all of you are and all of the children here. For assessments, so like Julianne said, we partner with Here To Learn. So Here To Learn will come in and they will assess any child whose parents feel they need extra assistance and getting them the support they need with either speech or OTPT or a special education itinerary teacher. So it's a great partnership that we have with them to help get them what they need before, prior to them going into kindergarten, so that way we can get those skills taken care of and hopefully get them off to a better start. We do three assessments throughout the year, beginning of the year, mid-year, and end of the year. We also do progress report cards three times a year, again, beginning of the year, mid-year, and end of the year, with those parent-teacher conferences, so we can continuously monitor the children and how they're doing and touch base with the parents as needed. In addition to those parent-teacher conferences, anytime that a child needs help, we reach out to them. The classroom teacher, myself, all of us together as a team, so we're all on the same, same side, supporting the children. So we use creative curriculum and as well as learning without tiers. So this is just some of the topics we do. We're doing a PET study in February, beginning of the year. Right now, they're doing all about me and learning about their families, and then we move on throughout the year. So we like to do our enrichment activities. We do have a music program at Northminster, and they get music once a week. We were able to have concerts for the families. They were all virtual this past year, but it was really nice because we did have some families tune in from Thailand, which was really, really cool to see. So yes, it wasn't great not having them in, but we were able to have more people attend with the Zoom option. So it was really nice that people were able to tune in and see their child participate and sing their songs. We did have, like I said earlier, we had a holiday concert, a spring concert, and a stepping-up ceremony. But the stepping-up ceremony, like I said, they were able to be there in person with us. So conversion, so we are continuing with the full-day model. In the morning, they're doing circle literacy, math. They have snack gross motor times, story time. We do lunchtime. The children are bringing their lunch, and we provide a snack for them twice a day. In the afternoon, they're going to follow up with social studies, science, gross motor, social, emotional, and really get them ready for when they go come here and go to kindergarten. If anyone has any questions that we didn't answer, we'll be happy to answer anything.
Any questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we have a Bear Road Elementary School update.
Oh, good evening, everyone. All right, so a little update on Bear Road. What we wanted to do was something a little different today, so we want to kind of reflect back on what we had when we started. And in addition to our Bear Road update today, Dan and Don are going to give you a little bit of an update on some, some new projects that we've got in the works. So Bear Road initially constructed in 1956. We're all very familiar with it. We've got a lot of work done this past year. Really, Phase One is virtually complete. We're finishing up some loose ends, and we're very much on our way to having some additional space available before snow flies, hopefully. But looking back at where we started, we've got a few photos here of the, the original building of some of the mechanical and electrical systems well beyond their useful lives and the dated appearance, you know, that we all lived with for so long. So we're going to look forward to seeing some pictures of our updated systems, our renovated classrooms, our new furniture. We'll talk a little bit about building safety and security and traffic flow and just show off some of, some of the great things that we have out there for the kids now. Okay, you can see the new courtyard under construction and the new weather system on the outside of the building going together back in March. We can see that the state of demolition and wonderful new spaces that are in use today. You can see the flexibility of some of the new furniture with the desks. Kindergarten through second grade chose these rectangular desks. Third and fourth grade, when they come in next year, you're going to see a different shape. It's a fish shape that nests together quite well. Some of the new library. And we're going to answer a few questions on this if there are any. So the project right now, for everyone's reference, Phase One is complete. We have a little bit of flooring left to finish in the gym hallway. We have a little bit of drywall work to finish there and we're working to do the same in a COVID isolation room. Okay? Those spaces we're wrapping up this week and early next week. Once those are done, the building will be fully useful for all the kids as is now, but those, those spaces will be finished and a little bit more friendly. All of the classrooms are actively in use now. We have kindergarten through second grade fully active in the building. We have half the gymnasium in use. The other half of the gym is our temporary kitchen and also a small staff break room. Okay? Later this winter, we will be completing work on the new kitchen and cafeteria and will transition those spaces into their permanent homes and relocate gym class to the cafeteria for the winter. And then once the gym is completed, you know, at the end of the, the school year, we'll move into that space permanently in the following year. So now we've completed demolition on the rest of the spaces. We have just about dried in one, one half of the new phase of work and are working to dry in the other half before snow flies this year so that all our contractors are working inside and finishing spaces throughout the rest of the school year. Okay, so any questions on the Bear Road project before Dan and Don get started?
Yeah, um, has the, what they call the shipping problem created a problem with being on time and on schedule?
To some extent, yes, but it's been minor. We got the furniture delivered very late in the summer, but we are working to get the last few finishing touches done. But for example, we have some of the book boxes for the desks in the kindergarten wing. We have two classrooms that are waiting on book boxes. So there's minor things, but not things that are keeping us from making the kids safe and getting them started with instruction.
And so basically your construction materials have been there pretty much when you want them.
Yeah, we were, we were a little bit ahead of the curve and we paid a little bit of extra money to store the HVAC equipment offsite in advance of the phasing so that we have the material onsite when we need it. All of our roofing supplies fortunately were ordered well ahead. Right now roofing material is very hard to get, but we had it all stored onsite and we've been able to keep that going.
So a little luck and a little hard work and you're pretty much on schedule then.
We are just ahead of schedule overall by a few weeks, but I wouldn't call that a comfortable margin.
Oh, got it, got it. Yeah, anything, anything can set you behind again. I got it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
How about the buses coming in the first day? How did that work?
The first day was slow, but we've learned and it is improving every day. I would say on day two, the time that it took was cut in more than half. Same thing with the parent drop off loop out front. Day one, we had traffic backed up on the street. Day two, I don't think a single car was backed up on the street. So we're learning. We did some re-stripping in the parking lot to make those changes permanent from those lessons that we learned. And you know, this is something that happens every year with every school. Bussing is a little slow on day one. It picks up and everybody gets into a routine and drivers doing drop off, get comfortable with the routine and get familiar with it again, but things are going very, very well.
Yeah, I just want to comment on, thank you for the, setting up the tour that many of us were able to do last week. It was, I know personally I've been through, worked through, lived through a number of renovations and I was just blown away by what I, what I saw as far as the progress made. You talk about structure for success, just the user-friendly learning spaces just were, they blew me away, what it looked like. And I have seen enough of them. So I just, I was impressed. Just wanted to share that.
Super. One thing I didn't share in a slide, the playground is open. The rubber surfacing was completed just within a week or so of school starting. So that is fully open for the community to utilize. We are waiting on a few pieces to be completed, but they are all safe to use at this point in time. The manufacturer has actually closed down operations just to focus on all the back orders and pieces that they weren't able to deliver before they take any new orders. So we should be seeing that very soon.
And any other comments or questions?
I'm going to turn it over to Dan and Don then so that they can go through structured for success.
Great. Thank you, Matt. So Paul, you mentioned structured for success and that is that's exactly what we intend to do for the district and for our, our buildings that we are working on. So our, our school buildings are community assets and we need to make sure that we continue to invest in them. And an example is if you have a vehicle or a car and you just ran it and you didn't maintain it, you didn't put oil, you didn't do those things. Again, eventually that would not be a good vehicle. So periodically we need to make sure that we are maintaining our buildings in order to preserve the investment for the community. These investments, the bonds that we look at, the state gives us aid and ensures that the local costs stay low. Critical areas of concern like building safety, modern learning resources for students, basic building systems upgrades, roof systems are addressing this capital project. So every five years, we do a building condition survey, which we presented to you and we need to make sure that we're doing those things just to make sure that we're doing what the state expects us to do to maintain our buildings. We prioritized our needs and we put in a plan for those highest need buildings and those are CNS Lake Shore and Cicero Elementary School. We're trying to continue to modernize our teaching and learning spaces to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our staff and our students and look to get feedback from people just to make sure that we're providing them with the best possible educational setting. And in doing this, we're maximizing state aid, which is the most critical piece in order to get the most every five years so that we're getting 75 to 80% of the aid in order to do the most work. So one of the things that we have is that we're looking at a referendum for the, in December and the proposition will have all three of these pieces involved. One is CNS High School renovations, Lake Shore and Cicero renovations and Minor Smith improvements, Smith Road improvements, also including a community pool facility constructed at the high school and also a capital reserve fund. And just the community pool facility, again, talking about community, it would not just be for the students. It would be for the community to be able to utilize. I think now, Don, turn it over to you.
Yeah, Matt, why don't you go ahead to the next, next slide? So just talking about the specifics of what's getting done. As everybody probably knows, the HVAC system at the high school has been undersized and underperformed for many years. And the staff has, has worked through it or M and O folks have done the best they can to make that work, but it is really in critical condition. It will be a high priority, one of the first things we tackle if the voters approve the project. Critical systems like PA, fire alarm and other electrical systems will be upgraded. And we're going to do a minor amount of roof work. We've done work up there, but there's still some more roofing that needs to be done. Big ones are the gym and auditorium renovations. We're going to go through those and update those facilities, which are desperately in need of, of work and then repaving the majority of the roads. And we're going to develop that connector to the property that we just purchased so that we can use that in emergency situations for evacuating the facility, getting emergency personnel onto the campus. And that's going to be a real asset for us as soon as we get that road built and connect that property. Lake Shore, as everybody is aware, we did work in the 90s on Lake Shore, but we still have significant amount of that building. That's 50s and 60s vintage. So another part of the project will be to tackle the 50s and 60s portion of Lake Shore and all of, I'm sorry, the 50s, 60s portion of Cicero Well and all of Lake Shore. Lake Shore is really the same vintage as Bear Road. It's had a little more attention to it, but it needs to be completely renovated. And what we're going to do with these projects is we're going to do with the first referendum, half of Lake Shore and half of Cicero L. And so we'll be back in a later phase to tackle the other halves of those buildings. Smith Road needs some additional paving. The PTO is gonna, has donated some money. We want to redo their playground and again, PA and fire alarm improvements. That work is about $65 million worth of work. And I think that the most important message obviously is this work is desperately needed, but also because of our financial situation, fund balance and reserves and whatnot, we are able to cover the local share of, of that portion of the project. So it'll have no tax impact for the taxpayers and that's, that's really important. The next slide talks about the community pool and as Dan, Dan mentioned, we are, we are blessed to have, you know, a great men's and women's swim team. We're also blessed to have very patient coaches. I think they've been lobbying for a pool facility for many, many years and they have done a great job of advocating. But I think some, some basic facts that we're all aware of, every large suburban school district in central New York already has a pool facility and some of them also have a brand new state-of-the-art YMCA as well. The, I don't need to tell the board that, that you guys commissioned a pool study committee and they did very thorough work with a lot of different folks and came back with a recommendation that we need to construct a pool. Al Sterpy has been wonderful and he has made $2 million of Sam Grant funds available and we have allocated some of our fund balance to the project. It's about a $17 million project. And we've got it down to the point where we can do it with about a dollar fifty a month on a $100,000 home. It's about a three-quarter of percent tax increase just for this portion of the project. And the way this will work is we'll have, as, as Dan showed you, the kind of the, the three proposals. The first one being the $65 million worth of work. The second proposition will be this pool. If the first one passes, then the voters would be able to approve this and then this would, this would be approved. You can't approve the pool without the first one being approved because that work is absolutely critical and, and needs to be done, as Dan said, in connection with the building edition survey. The last part of this, if you go to the next slide or go to the pool, let's show that. So a couple of things about the pool. Dan mentioned a community, we keep emphasizing community pool. The reason we keep saying that is we want a facility that can have a separate entrance, separate locker room, eight lanes so that it can host any kind of sectional meet and a diving area that can allow for the one meter competition diving. And that pretty much meets the needs of our, of our swim team community and our, and our community needs and in terms of other folks using the facility. And this is not any particular pool or necessarily what ours will look like, but it's the concept, a deep end that can do one meter diving as well as eight lanes. The last piece of this is a little bit of a financial discussion that we need to do a little more work on, but I think we're going to, we'd like to ask the board and then the voters to approve the establishment of capital reserve. We've had some good experience with this as a district. What this allows us to do is opportunistically, while we're working on Phase One, put money aside so that perhaps in phases two and definitely in phase three, we can have money set aside to offset the local share of the project and minimize the tax impact. Money would only go into the capital reserve if there was excess money available and the board approved that money going in. We would ask the voters to approve the creation of it and the funding of it in December. And then the board would have an opportunity each year to look at our financial situation and put money in if it's available and not if it's not. But down the road, it'll allow us to offset that local share and, and that's why we think it's an important component of, of this referendum. So the timetable, we've, as you know, we've, we've talked publicly about the building edition survey and the need to have work. And we even talked with our, had the architects here to talk about it. We're going to continue to flesh out the details and bring more to the board. We hope to talk to you again in September, at the end of this month with another presentation and, and then hopefully get you folks to approve the referendum that we would bring to the voters in December on the October 4th meeting. And then we'll start some extensive community communication through October through December, the early part of December, with a vote on December 8th. And we just want to make sure that the community is fully aware of, of the scope, the importance of this work and the financial implications, which thankfully are minimal to the local taxpayer. Any questions for Dan, Matt or myself?
I have a question. Sorry. I thought that we were going to bring two different referendums, like two different time tables.
You know, we, we, we are going to have actually three referendums, referendums for three phases. But those are the big phases. Those are things like the first half of Cicero L and Lake Shore. And then at a later phase, we'll do probably the third phase, we do the second half of Lake Shore and Cicero L. But these, these three items are what we've specifically identified for Phase One, but they would be three separate propositions on the eighth. So voters would have a chance to, they'd have to vote for three different things.
Okay. Thank you.
You probably don't even know the answer to this yet. I may be getting a little bit ahead of the, the curve here, but you keep saying community pool. Obviously the school district would house and maintain the pool. Would we like outsource or join up with somebody to manage the day-to-day operations of the pool?
Well, I think, I think honestly, we would be the owner and operator of the pool, but we would try to partner with the local Y, the local towns for programs that we can't run on our own necessarily, like water safety instruction, lifeguarding classes, senior student aerobics, youth swimming lessons and maybe even, you know, some summer activities, open swimming for kids in the summer. We're not really sure, you're, you're right. We don't know what this looks like yet, but our goal would be to have the community use the pool and those organizations pay us for the use of the pool, which would offset some of our operating costs.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. And our final presentation should be on the American Rescue Plan.
Dan's going to lead us off here.
The American Rescue Plan or ARP, as you've heard. Go to the next slide, Don. The purpose is to address the urgent needs of our students. We all know the, the issues that have come across with COVID. So the first thing that we needed to do was safely reopen schools to full-time in person. So we, we went the hard route of kind of a hybrid and five days in-person learning. I think we all agree is what all of our students needed, not only for their academic needs, but their social emotional needs and just their development as a whole. We've been addressing the loss of instructional time with academics. So some of the things that we've done is we had a elementary program that serviced a little over 400 students for four weeks this summer. And we were just thrilled with the progress students were making. Parents were absolutely ecstatic at the ability to send their children to help recover some of the loss that had taken place during some of the COVID time. We not only did that K six, but we also provided the junior high component that focused on ELA and math. And that serviced about 125 students for a two-week period in August. Again, students who had struggled throughout COVID were able to address some of their needs as well. During these times, we also provided social emotional needs and we did hire counselors during that time in the summer because we didn't know all the things that took place in the homes and families and the struggles. So we wanted to make sure we would be able to give them something that we could move into the school year and continue to address. With mental health needs, you saw in our budget, we did hire student faculty for family engagement. We hired more social workers, counselors. We partnered with county agencies, Liberty Resources, contact community services. The county had what they call Promise Zone specialists. And I've been in all eleven schools this these last few days. These people are working so hard. I met with our counselors today. And just all the work and students that they've identified and trying to make sure they're making contact with the students that are in need. And one of the things that came out of a discussion that we had today before, we used to be reacting to a lot of the things and a lot of the needs that our students and families were having. We have enough resources now to be proactive and to anticipate what's going on and providing someone for every single family or student to be able to attach themselves to, to be able to meet all of their needs. We've also talked about the disparities and access to educational opportunities. So we've been looking at just technology and the needs of families and trying to make sure everyone has access to equitably expand opportunity for our students who need it most. We've provided support within sustainable culturally responsive framework. And we've implemented evidence based interventions within multi tiered supports. Again, in the budget, you saw a lot of the AIS supports. We hired additional teaching assistant staff to target grades kindergarten and first grade. And we've also trained some of these teaching assistants to be able to meet their needs as we're moving forward.
So I can talk a little bit about some of the specifics. So ARP will will provide North Syracuse about eleven and a half million dollars. And and that's in addition to the seven point eight million dollars we got from the coronavirus response and relief funds. And so as Dan talked about, we're sustain, it's all about sustainability for us, is to, you know, putting these programs in place. And so we've got an application that is due September thirtieth. Our plan is to spend these funds as in accordance with the requirements over a three year period, this school year and the next two school years. And the the funds are going to either be spent on one time expenditures, and you'll see when I flip to the budget, what I mean, such as furniture and equipment or sustainable programming. And as I mentioned, that's really been our focus to sustain program for our students and staff. And then to the extent that funds are used to offset expenditures, including the district's operating budget, a fund balance will result, which can be used for future programming that supports ARP goals. And so you know, this money came at us kind of fast and furious. And so there were things that were in the twenty twenty one budget, I'm sorry, twenty one twenty two budget. And maybe in subsequent year budgets that are in a part of our general fund budget. And and depending on what the needs of the students and staff and community are, we may end up spending that money using ARP funds. And to the extent that we do, we'll be able to then use those funds that, you know, there'll be some money that'll flow to fund balance and we'll be able to hopefully get a little more life out of out of this grant, these grants. Here's the budget. So you might find it odd that we're we're buying classroom furniture and there's some PPE in here as well. But one of the things that I think was maybe fortuitous as we came into COVID, but maybe a little embarrassing if COVID hadn't happened is we have a phenomenal number of one arm desks that have been around since the seventies. That is not the kind of furniture that is that encourages collaboration and flexibility. And you know, our teaching staff have been wonderful dealing with this volume of furniture and that we've had in our middle schools, junior high and high school. But it really is not the type of furniture that that allows for, I think, more creative learning environments. And so it served us well, honestly, during COVID. But we're really excited. We've spent a lot of time over the last year talking to a number of furniture providers. And we've, we're trying to develop some standards and and to provide our our teachers and our teacher leaders with some options for how to equip classrooms. And one thing we did learn is we did Bear Road. Furniture is expensive. And so that's why we've apportioned a fair amount of this, this one time expenditure to to furnishings. Additional mobile technology for our staff. And this has been a, this has been a a topic we've we've kind of stumbled and bumbled through. You know, when the COVID hit, we we gave everybody PCs and laptops, or I'm sorry, laptops and Chromebooks. And we did the best we could to get everybody the technology they needed to be successful. And all the while we were prepared for a one to one or moving toward a one to one strategy. But we're still assessing what are what are the needs of our instructional staff? What do they really need in terms of mobile technology? And one of the things that's being deployed right now is a larger format Chromebook for our for our instructional, for our teachers. And it seems to, in the early stages, we're getting some good feedback. So we put, and I know this doesn't seem like a small amount of money, but over a three year period, we're planning on spending about another two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars on mobile technology specifically for our instructional staff. We realized we needed another family engagement counselor. And so that's in here as well. Then Dan talked about the important work we did with summer schools. But we also want to be able to do some after school programming. And in order to say sustain that and to scale it up to meet all the needs of all the kids, we've budgeted a fair amount of money toward additional summer programming, summer schools done by our own people and after school programming. And then one of the things that we talked to you about our HVAC system at the high school, I'm going to blend a couple of topics here, if you bear with me. We have really old HVAC control systems. And there are two problems with that. One is they operate on really old servers. And really old servers are not secure. So we've spent time taking those servers and getting them off our network so that no one could use those to penetrate our our network. But it also has created reliability things, just the ability to manage our air air quality and air quality control has been a little more challenging. So one of the opportunities we have is to purchase an upgrade to our Siemens control system, which will allow it to be on a more modern server, will be allow us to manage the systems we have in place more optimally and create a more comfortable learning environment. And that's a good investment because we'll be able to use it as we upgrade our HVAC systems in connection with the this referendum that hopefully the voters will prove in December. And then, believe it or not, I I think the board knows, I said, believe it or not, you know this, you know, I don't need to say, believe it or not, the board knows that each week we've come to you since the twenty one twenty two budget, I'm sorry, that yeah, twenty one twenty two budget was approved. And we've been adding positions. We've been working hard to keep class sizes low, add that additional counselor or that additional social worker or anything that we need to meet the academic, social, emotional needs of kids. And so we've got additional positions that we've approved that were not budgeted for, and we plan on using ARP money to fund those. Now, you might see in the title here, our initial ARP budget, we welcome feedback from our school community on this. This is a pretty fluid thing. We can change, make changes and adjustments to this. But this is the budget we'd like to file this month, and we'll get the feedback from folks. And to the extent that we have to make adjustments, we certainly can do that. That's the that's the budget. Any quick, before I click off this slide, any questions or concerns about anything you're seeing about the budget?
I have a question.
Sure.
So I also was questioning the large furniture purchase.
Yeah.
And that's an acceptable expense for this.
It is. It is an acceptable expense. And and so it it it's a shocking number. I'm not going to lie to you, but we have a detailed spreadsheet that supports, you know, literally how many desks and how much money at a middle school versus the junior high and high school versus an elementary school. And and believe it or not, I think I mentioned here, yeah, that we're we're not going to need to furnish Bear Road, but we are going to provide furnishings for the North Syracuse Early Education Program. You know, they too are, you know, working with some leftovers. And and they would really benefit from that. So it furniture is expensive, good furniture is expensive if you want to make it last. And so it is an allowable expense. And 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 this is, this is what it would cost to touch all of our buildings except Bear Road. And this is to touch all of our buildings. This doesn't mean buy every stick, brand new stick of furniture, but it it really focuses on those instructional spaces.
Right. And something this large, would that go out to a bed?
Oh, of course, of course, yeah. We, thank you for saying that. And all of the purchasing that we would be doing would be in accordance with New York State purchasing policies and requirements.
And keeping social distancing in mind when we purchase, because I'm sure
Flexibility, yeah. And that's that's the, Matt showed you some of that furniture. The ability to reconfigure and move it around and do different things with it. And yes, create collaborative spaces when that's appropriate and create social distancing when that's needed.
Some of the furniture is kind of like puzzle pieces. And they're on wheels and you can create groups of four, you can create groups of six. We ran into a problem this year with all the tablet armed chairs, the amount that we had at the high school and junior high. When they were proposing that we use partitions, that was problematic. And also tablet armed chairs were probably in the sixties and seventies. But one of the things that we realized, our kids are much bigger than when kids were back in the sixties. And their situations were students is just not comfortable to sit in some of these situations in these tablet armed chairs. So we're trying to upgrade to meet the needs of our students and our teachers to be flexible and to create an environment that they can be comfortable in. And we're using Chromebooks. Trying to have your Chromebook on this tablet and trying to set up, you can't get any other books or anything else. It's very awkward and kids have something in their lap and then it's only about what fourteen by it's tiny, it's just not conducive to the learning environment of today.
Were these primarily in high school and junior high?
High school, junior high, but believe it or not, a fair amount in the middle schools as well.
These were the, when you call, what are you calling?
Tablet armed desks. I call you got it.
So you had to have left handed ones also.
A very few.
Very few, yeah.
Yeah.
I did well with those, by the way. Keep talking about sixties and seventies. I didn't fit in any of the desks, but nobody cared then.
Yeah. Yeah.
They're very heavy. Yeah.
And the other, the other thing that's very cool about the new furniture is you can adjust the surface heights. They're on wheels, you know, or the or the part of them are on wheels or easy to move around. You know, it's just, I think it really does improve the learning environment, or at least that's what I'm hearing from those that have had opportunities to work with the new furniture. Having said that, just a couple of other things. So we've, we've, obviously, with all of these grants, we want to make sure we're in compliance. So we've already signed assurances and submitted those SED. We've already had what we're calling, you know, preliminary approval. And based on that approval, we can actually start obligating the district. And some of the things you're seeing, we've actually obligated ourselves already on some of those things toward these ARP funds. We're going to post this on our website and we're going to continue to see comment. You know, particularly from our school community about how these that these funds are are spent. And that's pretty much all presentation. Any questions or comments?
Do you have a question on the after school programs? I see the pay for the teachers. It's great to run those programs. Do we have buses for the kids that wouldn't otherwise be able to attend?
Part of the funds, part of the funds would be used to deal with transportation for folks. And we actually have had a conversation about that topic. We're realizing that participation is dramatically impacted by the lack of school to home or event activity to home transportation at the end of the day. And we're looking at that.
The other thing that we were able to do this year, and I was wondering if there's budget money to follow it through the next year after this, were the school lunches were going to be affected, families are going to be affected much more than just this year.
Yeah. So on that note, right now, all, as you know, all meals are free breakfast and lunch for all students. And there's a lot of talk that that will become a permanent thing that hasn't been made permanent yet. I will say this, I'm incredibly nervous about if it's not made permanent. Because it will be a a real shocker to our our families if they have to now pay for the food. And and we may have some serious collections issue collecting from families if we if we go to back to paid meals. And I think I think we touched on this when Wendy was here. The the federal reimbursement we get for the meals is actually higher than what we charge our families for the meals. And that has allowed us to enhance the food quality. And and we really want to be able to sustain that. So we're hoping that federal funding is is made permanent.
Yeah, it would be great to see that be a permanent change, especially with the food insecurity that's growing at a high level, even if they were fully employed families out there. So great. Good to hear.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a few comments. First, Dan, Don, Chris. I'm so excited as a former educator in this district to see the programs that we have this year. Social workers, psychologists. I'm just overwhelmed because I never had that. And small class sizes, we'll be adding, I believe, a kindergarten tonight at at Smith Road. It's what we should have had. And thank goodness for the American Rescue Plan. So now I'm going to say a little bit that maybe I shouldn't say. If you go back a year, and I know Beth, you weren't here, and neither was Xavier. We were looking at something drastic in this school district throughout the United States and education. Our senators, Senator Joldebrand, Senator Schumer, were continuing trying to get schools money and none came. Month after month after month, we had nothing. And then two thousand and twenty, there was an election. And somebody stepped up to the plate. And now look what we have. So I just want to remind you the people in our community, this might not have happened. We might be sitting here with not the social workers, but not the after school programs, not the summer school. It could have happened. So we need to remind ourselves of our leaders and who believes in these kind of programs. Thank you.
Thank you. I couldn't have said that better because we were looking at such a different different picture not too many months ago. Okay, moving along, Board of Education Committee reports. I believe we have some dates to share. I'll start with Mary for policy, correct?
Yep, our first policy committee meeting for the school year is on Tuesday next week. On September twenty first at five PM, we're going to hold the meeting via Zoom.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Mr. Crabtree?
The Legislative Committee will be meeting on the twenty ninth of September, and we also will be doing Zoom with our new students and some new members.
Thank you. Superintendent's comments, Superintendent Bowles?
Thank you, Paul. I just wanted to say I have the opportunity to get into all of our buildings over the last few days. And I can honestly say it's been one of the best openings I can remember in about ten years. I've talked to teachers, I've talked to students. Some comments, Bob, from some kindergarten teachers in several buildings. They've just come up and they put their hands together and said, thank you. Just the the class sizes and to be able to meet the needs of the students, especially not only academically, but just in general, since all the things with COVID. I've gotten emails about that. So I I would concur with what you had said about that. Again, I've met some wonderful people that have been newly employed as far as social workers and counselors, and then some people from outside agencies that are also. When I was in one of our schools, there was a person, she came right up to me and introduced herself. And they are working right from the get go with students and it's hands on. And they are assisting teachers with their students that struggle. I've had many teachers come up to me about that as well and say, say, thank you. So we are meeting the needs of many more students now that we have the resources to do so. I do want to comment on the excellent job that our staff, our teachers and our administrators have done with some of the openings and the activities. I see smiling, happy faces on many students, parents. If you live in Cicero, you would not been able to get by on that Friday night. There was a a welcome back outside. So there's many things that are happening. And I think we're meeting the needs of many of our families. And I just want to be able to continue to do so. So I I'm looking at the activities and the one fun thing that you'll hear is Mr. Crabtree and I have races from one activity to the next because he usually tries to get to many things. And he makes sure that he beats me. But there are some things that are going on and we'll continue to do those things and meet the needs of students and families. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bowles? Board of Education comments?
I actually do have a comment. We have two phenomenal women in this district. One has been with us for thirty three years, another twenty three. One has retired and one is about to. I'm talking about Jody Rogers with Parks, Parks and Recreation Director and Tony Lynn Brockley with the canteen. Tony has changed the lives of endless numbers of teenagers in this community for Uh Tony has changed the lives of endless numbers of teenagers in this community for. Seems like a couple of lifetimes. Um anybody who's gone through this district seems to know who Tony is. And um. She's finally decided to retire. Uh Amy is um Amy Crowley is taking over for her, doing an excellent job. But these two women will be honored uh September twenty-ninth. From three o'clock to seven o'clock at the canteen. With an unveiling of a dedication to the two women that have done so much for our kids at six o'clock that evening. And all are welcome. Uh one request is to park at the high school and walk over to the canteen, because I think there is going to be. A uh phenomenal turnout to honor these ladies.
Thank you. Other comments. I know I'm always looking towards Bob. You're all set or?
Just want to say, Dan's mentioned, so I think we need to mention that we will have a home football game. First time in um where fans will be allowed, uh I believe, uh in the fall, not in the spring. And also there's the uh band competition on Saturday night, which brings many great bands from Central New York.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to ru- routine action items. And I'll ask for a. Uh motion to consider the approval of the minutes of the meeting of August twenty-third. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Crabtree. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, pose that is carried. Like a motion for B and C to place those together, please. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mrs. Scanlon. That would be the consideration of classification as placement of disabled students by the CSC. And the classification of home instruction program, disabled students. Any discussion? Those are before us. Seeing none, all in favor, posed that is carried. Uh motion for D, please. The acknowledgement of the business office reports, motion from Mr. Herman, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose that is carried. Discussion action items. If I get a motion, place A and B together, please. A motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Dr. Kramer. Those are just amendments to the organizational meeting in July. No discussion, seeing none, all in favor, pose that is carried. Just a motion, I could take C separately. That's amendment to the twenty-one, twenty-two district calendar. A motion, please. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. We have some uh staffing changes that are in the summer reference in the Friday letter, and we have them on the Personnel A. B. So if I get a motion to take items D. Through I together, please. If I may, motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorne. So we have D through I in front of us together. Any discussion or questions on those items? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, those are carried. Thank you. Item J, designation of scoreboard sponsorship, a motion, please, if I may. Motion from Mr. Maurizio, second from Mrs. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, pose that those that is carried. Thank you. And I'll take K and L together, the non-marketable and marketable surplus in the surplus of marketable vehicles. Motion from this. Gamble and second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion there? We got a lot of school buses there. I hear you can renovate those and live in those like campers. Okay, seeing none other than my comments, all in favor, posed, that's carried. Thank you. Personnel report A, a motion, please, place that before us. Move from this Kruger, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose that's carried. Support staff personnel B, please, a motion, place that before us. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from this Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose that's carried. Administrative personnel C, a motion, please. Motion from Mr. Maurizio, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, pose that's carried, like just to recognize Ms. Pellegrino in the back. We just officially hired her. Congratulations. Act of October fourth, I guess she's already employed here, but October fourth, that position will change. Congrats. At this time, I'm gonna make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment history of one individual and to review one legal matter with no. Action to follow. If I can get a second, please. Second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion? It's the one item that we discussed earlier was removed. This is a different legal. Okay, yes, yes. My understanding, any other questions on that? I'm correct, correct, Connie? Yes. Oh. Okay, I need to amend that. I just thought the other. Nope, no, that's okay. I was looking at, I don't want to say anything, this executive session. So the motion I'm gonna amend. Is for the purpose of reviewing the employment history of one individual with no action to follow. Thank you. Any discussion on that? Many more discussion. Okay, all in favor? Pose that is carried. And if I get a motion to adjourn, motion from Mr. Herman, second from Mr. Thorne, any discussion on adjournment, seeing none. All in favor, pose, we are adjourned.